Dr. Golden, you could at least in prayer after the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, you come on up and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I want to thank the city to have invited me to give the invocation. Let us pray. We were gathered here this evening along with our elected officials, the mayor, the council members, and appointed officials to do the work of the people of Beckley. God has imbued us each with a spark of divinity that allows us all to recognize our common humanity, our individual spirituality, the need for communal effort through the deliberations of the city council. Local government is an expression that we are sisters and brothers keepers. God grants that the mayor, city manager, and the council will find ways to discern the needs of our community. The means in which to address these needs is to promote the well-being of the city and its residents. We have divine presence to guide the deliberations of the council. Do all with their thoughts and hearts consideration what is most helpful to all and possess both humility and wisdom in the pursuit of their responsibilities. May God bless them and their efforts. And the light of divine presence shine upon them and be gracious to them. And may God bestow favor upon them and lead them in fulfilling their responsibility with grace and wisdom to the city and the people of Beckley. And let us say amen.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the reading approval of the minutes for the August 5th, 2025 regular council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Second. Are there any questions? Any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay, very well. All those in favor of approving minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved. Thank you, council. Next is the August 6th, 2025 workshop. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any questions or comments about the workshop on August 2nd, or August 6th? Very well. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved for the workshop. Thank you, council. And next is the August 12th, 2025 special council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Still moved.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the special meeting? Very well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved as well. Thank you, council. Next is public comments. Oh, there they are.
We were tracking it down.
Yeah, it's like I haven't gotten here. Anthony.
Anthony's not here.
He just came in and left.
So you go watch, let us know if anybody's online.
Yes.
Do we have anybody listening on?
We have about like ten.
Okay, so very well. If you're listening online, if you're calling by phone, just dial star three to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. If you're connected by computer, just simply click the hand icon on your participants panel and we'll let you go after the ones that are here today. So we'll start with Mary West. And remember, you got three minutes. Jessica will let you know when you're at two minutes and thirty seconds. So when you hear two thirty, try to wrap it up. Mary West, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am still trying to see where we will get some more bumps or humps down on the road. So if we can, would you all please put a couple more down there to slow them down? And also, I am getting paperwork to do a complaint against AEP, the gas company, and Beckley Water Company. Because you all know, Beckley Water Company gets three dollars off of every senior every month because they have to bill the almost twenty-six other month. And seniors are set differently than people that are working the job. And if anyone, soon as that paperwork come in, they want to file against AEP for the rate hikes that's coming up, and also one for the net metering if you have solar, that they're trying to take from the people that have solar. So I will be making copies once that paper come in. And I'm going to check with them to see if people can go online to file a complaint. Everybody need to work on that kind of stuff. File complaints where they need to be. Nobody is rich here. And we have, the bills are steady going up. And AEP, if they get this rate hike, they're looking to get another before the year is done. So wake up everyone, let's file against them. The gas company wants a rate hike too. The other gas company just sent their customers rate hikes today. So if you all can start to file complaints and make it known that we are mad as Hades and we're not going to take all this stuff anymore. And I want to thank you all for being and doing what you all are doing to help the city of Beckley. Because I know it's a hard job. You're not going to please everybody. Because you don't please me all the time, but it don't make me feel any better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary West. Tom Mosley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Folks, are you all familiar with the word ambiance? You're familiar with that? It's the mood or setting, how something feels. I worked that twenty-two years ago and I met my wife and heard what the ambiance of her home was supposed to look like. So she reminded me the other day about the ambiance of our city. We need to take a little more pride. We need to trash up. We just need to take pride in ourselves. If I'm walking down the road, I'll pick up garbage. And I think we need to make a conscious effort. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, and Mary West spoke about it, is speed. But I do have a suggestion, maybe other than speed bumps. What if we put out a few decorative signs somewhere nice with some flowers around them to remind people their families and children live here and play here? It's all about what you see. Driving down the road, speeding, you're listening to the radio. The weather's warm, don't pay attention. We're all bad for it. But we need to remind folks that children are on these streets. Their families are playing on these streets. Not they like me. I can't get out of that place and nobody's paying attention. So we just need something. So just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Kristi Dumas.
My name is Kristi Williams-Dumas. Glad we've sort of gotten away from saying our addresses. As my son would say, it's a little cringy to me. Just you have to take my word for it that I live in Beckley. Thank you. Cecilla Bach stated, "I believe that a guarantee of public access to government information is indispensable in the long run for any democratic society. If officials make public only what they want citizens to know, then publicity becomes a sham and accountability meaningless." I want to first thank you all for the compromise of the meeting day and time. I am one of the concerned parents of a child attending public schools by choice. Concerned that we weren't going to have counselors available, that neurodivergent children were on the verge of rights violations, and that the needs of special education students would go unmet. So attending both city council and board of education meetings was virtually impossible. So thank you for that. I stood here the meeting after you all were sworn in. And I opined that the number-one task of this common council would be to gain the trust of the citizens of Beckley. Much has happened in the short amount of time you've been in those seats. Some steps forward and some back. While I have my own feelings of trepidation about the new meeting structure and proposed ordinance tenants, I feel that the door is closing on elected officials' accessibility. Particularly with the public comments at the beginning of the meeting, the time limit of three minutes, which is really like two and a half minutes because the timekeeper screams, "Thirty seconds left!" in the middle of your talk. And that typically completely throws other folks off. I'm not deterred. The threat of that short amount of time being decreased for each speaker, if there are too many concerned citizens that are here and want to have their voices heard, is daunting to me.
Thirty seconds.
Mm-hmm. The notion that we are constantly reminded, and it's often written on our agenda that no member will address the speaker. Emails are often not responded to. And there is no public participation at the workshops. My question is, with this twenty-seven seconds, how do we gain access to you all? How do you even know what your constituents want and their desires? Be careful of living in the access denied era.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Basden.
Christina Basden. First, I want to address being kicked out of council. Twenty-eight seconds over my three minutes. I've never seen anyone else removed from council for doing that, ever, in my all attendance of city council meetings. I read my letter of intent to you that had my address on it, that had my email, my phone number, all of my contact information. Not one of you reached out to me. Not a one. In response, we get this amended ordinance that restricts us even further from coming to you with our concerns. Is this the legacy that this city council wants to leave? That is all.
Danielle Stewart.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I was very pleased to see that after months of begging, the city manager allowed this strong council to finally hold a meeting to talk about the opioid settlement crisis funds. However, that meeting was a complete and utter failure. You did not start the conversations we need to have before any of the funding is spent. Instead of focusing on the issue of substance abuse in this community, we focused on procedures for how to give away money. How many hours were spent researching to do what the Beckley Area Foundation's been doing for thirty years, quarter mile down the road? That's step six. We need to go back to step one, which is the hard part, and answer the questions that need to be answered. Questions like, what do we need to accomplish to address the substance use crisis in our city? What organizations exist and what are they currently doing to address the substance abuse crisis? How can we support their efforts and do they even need support? Where are their gaps in services? How do we synchronize our efforts with the county and the state to ensure we are all working towards a common goal? How do we use our funds to leverage additional funds from the state and federal government? These are some of the very basic step-one questions we need to answer before a dollar leaves the city. And let's not forget the most important one. How do we ensure that city money is being spent on city residents and not other people? Since this council refuses to hire a professional to guide you through this process, I recommend that you contract to do a community needs assessment focused on recovery, intervention, treatment, and prevention operations in the area. This assessment will go a long way to answering those first sets of questions. So by the time we get to step six of looking at grants, we know what we're looking for in those grants and not just throwing money at people because we like them or their organizations. Or worse, reimburse ourselves for expenses already incurred, pretending that it's actually helping solve the problem. We've already played that shell game of transferring money from a restricted fund to our general fund so we can go do something really awesome, like invest in a country club or privately owned business. We have one opportunity to get this right. Please don't squander our children's future because you don't know what you're doing. Find the professionals, get the help you need to understand,
Thirty seconds.
and then have the conversations about how to spend the money. Otherwise, two years from now, you're all going to be looking at each other, just like you did with the ARPA funds, asking yourselves, where did the money go? Where did the money go? Where did the money go? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody wanting to speak that's online?
We do not.
Very good. All right, then we'll move on to brief comments from council members and city manager. Janine, you're right ahead.
Okay, thank you, mayor. First of all, I just want to thank Dr. Stewart for the invite for the complication on yesterday. Our mayor spoke and you did an excellent job in council. Man Frank Williams was there also. We witnessed over, what, three hundred freshmen that came in for the semester. So I think their enrollment is increasing, so that is good to hear. And also, property owners, we need to really make them accountable for their overgrown grass and sidewalks. And let's just try to get this city, get it, you know, basically cleaned up. I don't know if we can, because Canora Street and South Fed Street are state streets. So I don't know if we could go into collaboration with them to try to find out what we can do to repair those sidewalks. Chief Bailey, about a week or so ago, wasn't there an accident that happened on South Fed Street? I don't know if you recall, about someone that was walking and got hit by a vehicle? Said they had to walk in the street instead of on the sidewalk. Okay, okay. So maybe that is something that we can do if we can try to get some grants, to try to get those sidewalks repaired and help these people with these overgrown lots. And the other thing is the land banks. Hopefully, you're still looking at that and maybe we can get that started soon. All right, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Kim?
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, Frank?
Yes, I'd like to feel free. The going there yesterday was awesome to see the young students that was participating in their first day, I won't say first day on campus, but learning the different buildings they had to go through. Mary, you did an excellent job with your presentation.
Thank you.
Then also, I'd like to thank Donnie. More work has been done over in Ward Three in a long time. And I appreciate a lot of houses being torn down. We do have some problems of abandoned cars. I mean, I drove the neighborhood the other day. And I was, like I said, I lived in the neighborhood all my life, born and raised there. And it's a shame that what myself and people have allowed in that community, not only in communities, but Ward Three itself. Myself and I appreciate Mr. Smith. We got together here the other day and we went up on Reservoir Road because we got several complaints up there about some activities. And we got some things that we'd like to see in a place. So it's, you know, I agree with everybody's sense. It's just not us sitting up here, it's the whole community itself. You know, we need to get together and come up with some common goals to make sure that the people can see that we are moving forward. And don't get me wrong, we're not going to be able to please everybody. I don't even please myself sometimes when I look in the mirror. But I do know one thing, where we need to stop putting God first.
Thank you.
I have no comments at this time.
Okay. So we hear all the time that there's not a lot for kids to do. It's one of the things I hear the most, that we need more activities for kids. Well, this Saturday, which is pretty much the last Saturday of summer, I know, not technically, but college football starts, high school football starts next weekend. I wish Jill Moorefield was here to talk more about it, but eleven AM to two PM, we've got the family fun activities at New River Park. They got bike decorations and bike parades and a lot of fun things for kids to do. And then at three o'clock at Epping Field, you've heard me talk about it before, we have our Beckley police officers playing a softball game, friendly softball game, against the firefighters. I know both sides are excited about it. I know we plan on being there as umpires. But it's really for the community. I mean, hats off to both of your departments because they have gotten so many gifts that we're going to be raffling off tickets for kids and adults the entire game. And you must be present to win, so you've got to stick around. But I think it's going to be a fun day. I know Mark Brasky's worked really hard on it. Adam Justice worked really hard on it. And I think it's been promoted well. I don't think they've played in four years, is that correct? So, you know, they're excited to get back at it. We try to hype it up. I did an interview on Fox 59 about it today and OAY, and I've got the register here, we'll do something about it. So we hope to encourage everybody. We want everybody to come out, bring your kids, bring your neighbor kids. We think it's going to be a fun time, so I look forward to seeing everybody Saturday. Sherri?
I want to acknowledge Academy of Careers in Technology that were recognized nationally as a wonderful place of learning for adults and students. Being that we are a home rule city, I don't know if that gives us a little bit more, I don't want to say power, but I agree with Councilwoman Bullock. There are, if we could expedite the process by which we go and cut a property and place a lien on the property, it just lowers everybody's property value. I do know, however, if you are the owner of a vehicle that you are the registered owner and it doesn't work, and if you want it towed, please contact me. I'm not going to pay for it. But there is a company that does that gratis. After, I mean, sometimes there are notice of violations of somebody that has a car that's not supposed to be there. After they have their due process, then it's removed. The city does not pay anything to have that done. But if you are the owner and you have a vehicle and you don't have the means to, if you want rid of it, let us know. Let us know. And we can, we had talked about that before. We did an assessment for Raleigh County Make It Shine for abandoned vehicles. And that's one of our things that we wanted to address, so anyway. And it just so happens that my husband and I were at the park in Hinton and met a family that had just come from the exhibition coal mine the day before. The family could not, the little children were talking about the coal mine. That's just one instance. And we just happened to find, to strike up a conversation. A mom and a dad and two little children, and another mom and a dad and another. And they, it was just unbelievable what they were saying. I was just so proud. That's all I have.
Very good. Cody?
I have no comments tonight.
Mr. Gerald?
I put in your folder a article from the ACCA magazine, which has a membership of sixty to seventy thousand people. We was one of the main articles in there for our 2025 Eastern Spring Nationals. So if you would, you can read that. It's for your enjoyment. But it was in that magazine covering the ACCA Car Show uptown. And I'm also working with Worcester Dina Tech on some projects, myself, Dr. Polling, and Dr. Stewart. So that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the enactment of ordinances. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance regarding lease of property at 100 Washington Street. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Foul for more information on it.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, tonight we will have the second reading and a public hearing on this ordinance. This ordinance was read for the first time and adopted for the first time on August 5th of this year. The ordinance is titled, "An Ordinance Authorizing City of Beckley to Lease Property at 100 Washington Street, Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, to Southern West Virginia Multicultural Museum and Community Centers." This ordinance primarily leases this property, which is the cultural center there or the community center in this area of town, for two years. And the lease is for one dollar per month. The lessor, which is the Southern West Virginia Multicultural Museum and Community Center, is required to pay for the liability insurance on the building. That will cover any incident that may occur there. The city, who is the lessor, is by this lease required to pay the utilities. And at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if anybody in the audience has any comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? Yes? Please.
I just want to say I'm in favor of this. And, you know, this kind of goes back to the whole opioid thing, giving kids things to do, giving them a place to go. You know, it's a great location in a part of the city that really has great needs. And I look forward to seeing where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have any comments? Yes, ma'am?
I just, is it okay if I speak from here?
That'd be fine.
I just want to say I'm in support of this ordinance because, I mean, this lease removal and it's long overdue.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor?
With that, may I have a motion to approve that ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Are there any questions or comments about this?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on it.
Sure, Frank.
This process has been going on for a while. But I'm glad to see that it's official enough. But I would say this, I had to get one more piece of paper for the insurance company. The loss rate, I believe, was called. And I've received it today and I appreciate Jessica and also Mr. Foul. And I will be giving this to the insurance company tomorrow. Because I had to get this in order for me to be able to sign. And we'll just take it from there. We'll see what happens. I'm looking forward to getting the building going strongly because I've always been active with it. Never been, always been active with it. And I'm looking forward to it. I mean, I'm sleeping now, resting now. It's a big burden, but, you know, things don't seem like it's going your way. But like I said earlier, you know, if you start putting God first, things will work out.
And I was just wanting Frank to give a little history about Ms. Elsie McCray and her courageous spirit and how she went into the office of Senator Byrd. Without having an appointment, she went in that office. And how much money did she ask him for?
Well, people know Ms. Elsie McCray. Her and Ms. Pat is really the originators over there at the Butler Country Center. East Park School, where I went to school, was a head start. They had busted out all the ones, the building was in deteriorating condition. And they decided, said, come Mayor Puig, said, you're going to do one or two things. Either go and turn the building down, put some more apartments over, just have a big flat piece of property. So Ms. Elsie, being up in DC, went to DC, walked into Byrd's office, no appointment, and says she wants to speak to Byrd. And you guys know Ms. Elsie. But she said we needed twenty-five thousand dollars to get a roof on there. Now, at this particular time, I was not part of it. But they called Mayor Puig, Mayor Puig told them, said, well, you're going to need more than twenty-five thousand dollars. So they got a grant for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to remodel the city building. And they remodeled. And if you go over the date, same original paint, same everything over itself. Some repairs were done by Leslie and her, and I appreciate that. That's how it started. It was a dream. And to this day, they went for it. The grant was given, the building was there. And don't get me wrong, when that building first started, it was twenty-four seven, seven days a week. And that's why I want to get the building back twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And I'm going to need your help. I figured out that we, as the board members, cannot do it by ourselves. We need the community. I had a call today from the gentleman concerning that. And I appreciate all the support that y'all have given us. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? Frank, why don't you, you know, I know we've talked about it a little bit. What are some of the activities that have gone on in the last several years?
We have a karate class downstairs, and the karate class, that was, when they first came over there, we had talked with Mr. Chad, well, now Chad's no longer there, he was up in Fort Pleasant now. And the kids, you know, them, what's they called, geeks, or whatever the outfit is, those things, I don't know what they're called, but those things were a hundred fifty plus. And so what the karate class people say, well, what we do is, we're just gonna, you know, they don't charge nobody, never have charged anybody, it's free karate class that's over there. And then also that, oh, I'm sorry, I figured y'all could hear me. You know, then, now we have a boxing class over there downstairs also. Other activities where, you know, we always have, like, people that smoke, we have had several prevention for smoking. We have had, we have, weddings have taken place over there. We have had, when people are forced to pass away, we have passovers over there where the people can't afford to go anywhere else, they come over there. And all this stuff is free. We don't charge anything. We don't charge anything. We ask for a donation, because we are five-one-six-three, and we can't ask for donations. And it's all kind of other activities that have taken place over there. So it's not like the building's not being used, the building, we have day camps, after school programs, still be taking part of it.
Anybody else got anything? What do the utilities run a year for that building? Any idea?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I was thinking it was like three thousand dollars or there about, it's not, not significant.
For the whole year?
Yeah, it's not a lot.
I had a question. Frank, did you get your name off the title, or president of multicultural?
No, they said he didn't have to.
He doesn't have to? Okay.
Nancy, we got an opinion from the Ethics Commission. And, and he is, he is certainly entitled to remain as their chairperson if he chooses to, and he can vote on this and speak about it also. And that's a written opinion we did receive from the Ethics Commission.
But that's a good question, though. Right, that was all cleared. Anybody else have anything?
I got some to add, ma'am.
Sure, Frank, go ahead.
You know, this, Mr. Mosley, can I have you come up here, sir?
Some things I can talk about. What is, what is this talking about exactly?
Yeah, me and Mr. Mosley, and y'all know, I mean, we've been ours, and we found to put this to rest of the day. And I want to shake your hand, sir, and say you've done a deal. All right.
Talk about progress, look at that! Anybody else have anything? Okay, all those in favor of approving the ordinance, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Congratulations, Frank. I know it's been a lot on you. Three thousand dollars a month, or a year? It's not a month, is it?
No.
Okay, great, we're moving on. Congratulations, Frank. Next up is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance amending City of Beckley Code, Chapter Two, Section Two, Two Zero Four, Order of Proceedings at Regular, Regular Meetings. Copy of proposed ordinance is available for review at City Hall, 409 South Canal Street, Beckley, West Virginia. Again, I'll turn this over to Mr. Fow for more explanation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this ordinance was read for the first time at our special meeting on August the 12th, which was a week ago. Tonight is second reading. We'll have the public hearing after I read it by title. What this ordinance does is it codifies the changes that we have been practicing for the past, this is the fourth meeting now. The last three meetings, we did try these changes to see how they worked. They appear to, to be well received. We did this in order to make it more convenient for the public to speak, and we think having public comments at the beginning of the meeting is certainly in the best interest of conducting business here. This is how the vast majority of cities do it in the state of West Virginia. So basically, those are the changes, the reorganization of, of our agenda. We also do have rules now on how any item is to be passed out to council. This also is something that is common throughout the state. It doesn't restrict anybody from passing something out to council. You just simply do it by getting permission from the mayor, handing it to the security officer, who then will approach council and pass it out. So those are the changes. This ordinance is titled "Ordinance Amending City of Beckley Code, Chapter Two, Section Two, Dash Two Oh Four." And at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance. Yes, ma'am?
I'll speak from here, 'cause I didn't come here me. My concern goes back to what I said in my two and a half minutes, is that it truly feels like we do not have access to our elected officials. I, I wanna hear a plan for how we are going, how you're gonna find out what we even need. Now, I'm speaking for people that are not here, and perhaps we have sent the message that you're not welcome and you don't wanna be heard. My city council person, I have very immediate access to Councilwoman Nancy. It's a rock's throw, I can walk across the street and she can hear what I have to say. But when you don't have that, when you don't have that access, what is going to be the mode by which you are able to hear your constituents? When we come here for workshops, we can't speak here, if there is a really hot and heated topic, and you know, we've been in here, we're in standing room only. So we wouldn't get to speak? We only get thirty seconds? We'd only get a minute? I mean, I feel like there's too much gray area in this. I liked Mayor Neal. I don't always trust his discretion on who gets to speak and who doesn't when it's a hot, heated topic. And so I feel like there's too much gray area here, and it feels very restricting, very restricting. And I really wanna urge council to think about this, because as it is written, what it screams to me is, we don't wanna hear what you have to say. You elected me to sit here, but you go ahead and just sit and be quiet, like it was said, just dribble, dribble and be quiet, to one of the professional players, I'm a sports fan. And this, we're playing a dangerous game here. Yes, speaking, public comments are at the beginning of a lot of meetings, how you get information to council is also pretty standard. However, the interaction that happens between council people and constituents is also much more open than what this seems to be projecting. And it, it's a very scary game that we're playing. Very scary game, and I want council to really think about that. Because there are people not as articulate, there are people that get so nervous getting up to this microphone, have folks in the middle, hurry, second! We have had to talk people into coming and expressing how they feel when we were dealing with the apartments, when we were dealing with other things that happen. And so, look around, when we dwindle down to ten people, could it, could it be the message that unconsciously is being sent to people? I can tell you, when I walked in and I saw what was written on each of them, I thought, they don't wanna hear from us. They're gonna hear me tonight, but it's giving a message to people, whether you guys realize it or not. And I know a lot of it's about safety, it's about quorum, it's about keeping the structure of, to me, they not understand all that, but very concerned about the message that they're sending to people who may not be advocates for a living, who are just average Joe Blow's that are working up all the huts what they have to even communicate with you the needs that they have. Feels like they're shutting us out of being able to communicate with our elected officials.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
May I say something?
Sure.
Now, the way the meetings are going right now is just lovely, because if you come in and you only have a short period of time to speak to you guys and say what we need, then, you know, we can speak and we can leave. We don't have to stay. But also, you know the way I see it, if anybody got a heart against their brother, please take it in privacy, and don't keep coming in here raising seven sheets of you-know-what. I am sick and tired of listening to all the negative stuff. Tell us some positive stuff, because they have a plate full of garbage from the last administration that left here knowing what they were doing when they left here and putting things into place. So we need to wake up and start to doing things the right way. Come together as people. Nobody should be nobody's enemy and not able to talk to one another. If we speak first, so be it. I mean, you know, just like the Board of Education and all. And I don't hear nobody saying about how bad it is with the Board of Education having a, a second annual get-together for students down at a parking conference and not making it open to the public. That's, these are things we need to come and see why it's not happening the way it should. Instead of just beating each other down, let's stand together and see if we can work as human beings with each other. And I would appreciate it if everybody concentrated and started doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Yes?
While I, whether I agree or disagree with your order is really just irrelevant, what is relevant about this is that you all have not been in compliance for months over this. And I informed you all months ago you were out of compliance. I'm glad to see you're coming into compliance, so to get into ordinance like it's supposed to be and rank, because what does it say to us citizens when you all don't care about the ordinance system? Says a whole lot. You can't obey your own rules, I can expect anyone else.
Anyone, anyone else have any comments? Yes?
I just wanna say, as far as we commented at the beginning, I think it's good. There's too many times you all have put something that we're gonna talk about, it's too like we can't be heard before. But I think it's a great thing.
That's a good point.
And it's a great policy.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else have any comments? Yes?
You all know that I'm against the public comments first. I think it doesn't give us a feel of where you all are. We can see the topic on the agenda, but we don't know exactly what is going to be discussed about it always. So how do we know what our stance is going to be? And if we don't tell you, how do you know how to vote? I also think that it's restrictive, because on here, it says the speaker is to remain behind the speaker's podium. What about people who are ADA, who can't get behind the podium? Was that a consideration? I also think, even though it says you are not obligated to respond to the speaker, that's different than what was written here before. You all have not responded to any public speaker for months, probably since January. So I'm going to echo what Dr. Christy Dumas said, and given that you all have my contact information, I'm easy to reach, I'm very outspoken, and I brought to you the same concerns about this Open Meetings Act for months, since you put it on here in January. Again, this was not compliant, and I brought it to your attention. I've spoke publicly about it since then, for eight months. We all need, to feel like you all care, and at the moment, none of us do, truly. You may think that I am here just representing myself, but there are hundreds of people that cannot make it to this meeting that I represent personally. So you all cannot, you can, you all can speak out against me, or dislike me, or whatever, but right is right and wrong is wrong, and I will continue to stand for what is right. And this is wrong. And if any of you pass this, I really do not wanna hear the words transparency or I care out of any one of your mouths ever again, because your actions speak louder. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments either in favor of or in opposition? If not, thank you. We will close the public hearing, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
May I have a motion to approve that ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, anybody up here have any questions or comments about this?
Yes, I'd like to have a comment on.
Sure, Frank, go ahead.
Concern of this issue right here, because this is an issue that's been going on for a while, too. I can understand their point of view, but you know, you said you cannot get a hold of your council. Now, I'm not on Facebook, because it's just too much stuff on Facebook that I don't particularly care for. I'd be glad to give you my telephone number, my cell number, my home number, and, you know, I'm, you can approach me anytime you care to. But I can understand the fact they're saying that if they're not able to speak out or point of view, and during the workshop, they are not able to do it either. It's any kind of way that we can pass a ordinance, that when we come to a workshop, because that's when, to me, the butts, the nuts and bolts is, we trying to get something accomplished, not saying that we're not doing it up and down, but it's more in detail, that we can have, where the people can come and they can speak on, on the issues that's been presented at the workshop.
We can recognize people to speak, we've done it before, I mean, but, you know.
Well, but most of the time, they say the public can't speak.
Well, it's not, but we can still recognize people if we feel like they have something to add to it. But that's a good point, though, Frank. Who else?
I understand the concern, but it would be good if, you know, if you could contact some of us that are in, you know, if you have questions. We'd be willing to, we can't, a lot of us, what is it, four, can't be together because of the sunshine law. But anytime that you all would want to meet, what is it, three? We just had a meeting here the other day with two of us, and, you know, Attorney Fow and, and City Manager Gerald, and had a very informative meeting. You can reach out to either, any one of us. I think we are all approachable. And I was talking to some other council members in other municipalities, and they were saying that the public comments are basically informational. So when we receive that information, that we can come together, if that's your ward, my ward, who, you know, that we come together and discuss that problem. Because when you still have continuous dialogue, that could go on all night. All right, so, but we're all approachable. You all have our numbers, you have our emails, you can either come see me. You know, most of you know where I live, okay, by the Family Dollar Store. Come and talk to me. All right, thank you.
I, I'll touch on that, too. I, I think we are absolutely have the best intention. I think council does a, has a big heart, I say that everywhere I go. I say they really care about the City of Beckley, they care about the people here. I think we're as transparent as probably any administration anywhere in the state of West Virginia. I mean, you can call me and ask me anything, and I know at least two-thirds of people in this room have my phone number, and I take calls from everybody. I mean, if not, you can reach the, the mayor's office, Susan will, like she did today, or yesterday, text me that a gentleman, Paul Fallon, was trying to get a hold of me. I immediately called the guy as soon as she texted me. So I, you, plus you get here early, talk to us beforehand. I know several of these council members stay for at least thirty, forty-five minutes after the meeting's over, and what do they do? People come up and talk to us. So I, I think all these people are extremely approachable and wanna do what's best for the city, and I just don't think moving the public comments to the first is, is trying to do anything sketchy, but that's, I don't care when we do it. We can do it at the end, it doesn't matter to me.
And I just want to, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm getting old, I have to speak when it comes to my mind. I wanna thank Mary West. Mary West calls me just about every day, we have a conversation, you know, so I just wanted to say I thank you, because whenever you have a problem, you call me. Or you, you will stop by my house, or I'll come by yours, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
I had that problem a couple times, 911, I called 911, then I called you guys, and one day I had me out, so I had to go to jail.
All right.
Mayor, I do have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I was first elected in 2016, and 2020, and in 2024. I remember Councilwoman Bullock and I worked on council together, as well as Councilman Williams, that first four years. And we had the municipal league come and, and explain what our mission was, and how the decorum, and how we were, and what you're allowed to do and not do, and so then... So then, in 2020, Councilwoman Reedy came on board, and Councilwoman Bullock, the three of us were here. And then we were trained again, and Anne Worley did that training for us, who had previously been president, right, president of the municipal league. And, and then in 2024, we had training again. I, I think what's problematic is, for the first eight years, I was on council, anytime there was a, an inquiry, we were allowed to have that banter. We were not, I, I don't recall that we weren't told that we, that that wasn't supposed to happen. And so now, the governance of the city, and I'm not trying to be a rogue person here, I'm just, I just have to get this off my mind. It seems to me we have a city manager form of government and a strong council, but that back and forth is, is, and now we're told that that shouldn't be done, or maybe we weren't supposed to be doing it in the first place, the first eight years. So I'm just, I'm, I'm so confused, because first we were answering questions, and then we're not answering questions, and, and so I would, I'm just, I want to do what's right for the constituents. I understand where you're coming from, it really, and I, and I would love that, Mayor, if we were having a workshop and those people were able to ask questions. And I understand, Councilwoman Bullock, that's informational, but if anybody wants to reach out to me and talk to me, and if you have questions, please. I mean, we're, certainly, I do want transparency. We're not trying to hide anything from anybody, I don't, that's not the intent here. And so, I, maybe I'm, do I need some clarification on why we answered for the first eight years?
You can certainly have a dialogue if you choose to. That wasn't something that I ever stated you could. I think the initial city manager put down, I think that's where that started.
Yeah.
The new city manager?
No, the former.
The former city, the for-
The first, yes.
So, could we-
But it was brought up, and just, sorry to cut to it. But, but just to bring up the points of why we said it was like, is because that was back when we had fifteen, twenty people talking, and if they get three minutes to speak, and then you have questions going back and forth, it could be, I mean, like Janine said, you're going to be here all night. But the other thing is, too, is a lot of times, things get thrown at us. It was not told to us beforehand, it's almost like somebody's trying to blindside you, and you don't have the answer. So, you know, especially for some of the things that's happened, we don't, you don't know the answer off the top of your head if somebody asks you a question like-
So, Mr. Foul, if someone does ask a question, and we are, with the passage of this ordinance, would we not be able, if we know the answer to a question?
Yes, ma'am. There, there is no prohibition from you speaking to somebody here. If somebody asks you a question, you're not obligated to, but there, but there's no, nothing to stop you from it if you choose.
Right. And a lot of times, we ask, you know, we ask them, "Come and see me after a meeting," or something like that.
Oh, yeah, I understand that.
We'll figure it out for you.
So there's not, that's correct.
Right.
Anybody else got anything?
Thank you.
So, what are we saying? We saying that we can't answer, or we can't?
If you choose to answer, Frank, you're entitled to, nobody, nobody will stop you from doing so.
Thank you.
Yes. Anybody else?
I just had an opportunity, I'm sorry. You know, when the light comes on, I have to speak. I had an opportunity to look over that Open Meetings Act and the rules. If you go down, scroll down and look at, like, frequently asked questions, there's the question that says, "Do we have to let the public speak?" And do you know what the answer was? It's up to council. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
That, that's correct. I mean, it's, it's a privilege, you all have been very, very good about permitting the public to speak.
And we want to hear you speak.
Really?
Yes.
That's what I was hoping, that didn't give me the first lady.
You could come talk to me any, you know that, you can come talk to me anytime you want.
The, the purpose, I think there's, there's, there's a purp, there's a purpose for this meeting, excuse me. The purpose for this meeting is to conduct city business. It's not a town hall meeting.
And you can call me anytime, you know that.
And so that's, there have to be rules and regulations in order that city business can be conducted in the proper, proper manner.
So what would be the reason for ever not wanting to hear from the public when you are conducting the business of the public who put you in those positions?
I'm, I'm not aware of anybody ever being refused the opportunity to be heard.
But, but what this ordinance suggests is that that is a possibility, in the future, that it is a possibility, because too many people are here who feel passionate about the subject, and that has happened, you know, your ratings are going down, there's nobody here, but, I mean, that has happened.
It's summer, it's reruns.
And that would be, because I was a veteran, so. But, but if there is a night when we are talking about something so impassioned by the people of this city-
Sure.
-and it's standing room only, this ordinance, as I am interpreting it, says that there may be times that nobody gets to speak, and if it is that long of an agenda, or if there's so many people here that want to speak, you may not speak at all. And this Bullock just let us know that, that, you know, that's a privilege anyway. So that is what this ordinance is saying, in essence, is that that privilege can be taken away.
Well, this ordinance is basically saying that we're guaranteeing the city business will be conducted as it needs to be. And so this, this does set rules, but I don't think there's ever been an instance in the city of Beckley that I'm aware of, that people have been refused the right to speak. Now, if there were hundreds of people here and they wanted to take up all night, that's not going to occur. You know, you have people here who are citizens, who were voted here, voted on this, this council to make decisions for the city. And so, we have to make, we have to make sure they have the right to do so. I'm not going to argue with you, I'm just explaining.
Argue? Why can't we just argue, because it's just, you of us just expressing ourselves. My thing is, if you were saying that it is a privilege for us to be here, and that they are enacting the business of the city for their constituents, my main contention, both when I was up there and now here in public comments, was that how do you know if there's no space, no time, no incident, no meeting provided, where you even find out what your constituents want? I voted in, Councilwoman Nancy. If I don't have access to her, which I do, but if I didn't have access to her, how would she even know the way that I want her to vote? How would she know how anybody in her district wants her to vote if there is no public way, space, or time to even talk to her, to get information about what she is voting on, to hear what you all are hearing, so that we can tell our elected officials what we want to see happen? There, literally, there is no place to make that happen. Half of you I see all the time, and/or I have your cell phone number in my phone, but the issue is, where, anywhere, are you able to really hear what the constituents want? If you have a workshop about a heated topic, and we're here, and we can't talk, we can't say a word, we can't ask anything, in, at public, in public comments, you've been told, and it was written on the agenda, that they will not respond to you. I agree with Christina, the language has softened, because that's not what it was a couple of months ago. That you will, you will not get a response from your councilperson. So what it feels like is when we get up for that three minutes, nearly two and a half, when we get up for that, it's like it's blowing in the wind. You hear us, next, next person. That person gets up and speaks, next. So when does anything that they say ever get addressed?
Come and talk to us after the meeting. I mean, again, we, we stick around for over an hour.
The word still remains, there is no real space for constituents to ask questions and get answers, not here in this meeting, not in workshops. Where does it happen? That's my question. And I'm hoping that you guys have a plan for that, I like Mr. Frank's suggestion. Where does that happen?
Anybody else got anything? All right, with that, all those in favor of approving the ordinance, say aye. Anyone want to post, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Next up is the adoption of resolutions. Resolution for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program in the amount of $375,700 to be used for the Southern Regional Highway Safety Program. Jessica, are you going to talk about this?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thanks.
This resolution is in place. The West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles has recently approved a grant in the amount of $375,700 for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program, which monies will be used for the Southern Regional Highway Safety Project. This is administered by Jamie Willhite of the Beckley Police Department, and this money is regionally used for all of the police departments in the counties and cities in the southern portion of the state. This is mainly used to enforce the checkpoints, red lights, any of that kind of thing comes through the highway safety program, and that's what this money will be used towards.
Okay, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Jessica. May I have a motion to approve that ordinance as presented?
So move.
Second. Are there any questions or comments for Jessica on this? Very well, all those in favor of approval, say aye. If there's anyone to post, say nay. Very good, thank you, council. Second, there's a resolution for the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program in the amount of $979,200 to be used for the law enforcement liaison project. Jessica, you want to talk more about that?
Yes, I sure can. Okay, so this resolution is from the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles as well. It is for a grant for $979,200, in which we use for the law enforcement lia, liaison project. And this is currently the, Tiffany Hart is the project director for this one. And this is a statewide project that the state, the police department is able to use for training and equipment, training for, you know, distracted driver, motorcycle, those kind of things flow through this for the entire state, and we administer it here. And that's all I have on that one.
Okay, very good. May I have a motion to approve that ordinance as presented? May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Jessica on this? Very well, all those in favor of approval, say aye. If there's anyone to post, say nay. All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, Jessica. There's no old business, so we'll move to new business, and this is the award of bids for the paving of Mercer Street and Nixon Drive and Dorcas Avenue. At this point, I will turn it over to City Manager Phil Gerald.
Yes. Two weeks ago, we opened bids up for paving from two different vendors. We had a vendor protest, the high bidder protested the lower bidder, asking about the documents, and it, I reviewed all the documents, and the low bidder actually did not submit the proper documents, so I had to disqualify his bid. In the meantime, I talked with the vendor, the second vendor, and he's substantially higher than our budget, so I told him that, that there was a possibility we would reject his bid because of budget constraints. And then, after that, I had my staff call HUD to see if they had additional funding for this project, because this is a HUD project, and they said no. And at that point, I asked them, if, or I asked my staff if it's possible to reject this bid because of budget constraints, and it is. So that's my recommendation, is to disqualify the first bidder, the lowest bid, and reject the second bid, and rebid the projects. So that's my suggestion to you. I cannot reject the project unless you vote to reject the project, and rebid the project.
Okay. May I have a motion to reject the bids that we opened up a couple council meetings ago?
And rebid.
And rebid.
And rebid.
Yes. Second.
Second. Any questions for Mr. Gerald on this? Pretty, okay. With that, may I have a motion to reject the bids and rebid?
Push the motion, second.
All right, all those, all those in favor of approval of rejecting the bids and rebidding it out, say aye. Anyone to post, say nay. Awesome, thank you so much. There's no executive session tonight, so with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Everyone got a part of the motion?